Let's call the county council meeting orders, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great honor of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Good evening, everybody. This is the regular scheduled meeting for May 1st, 2017. We'll begin with the local members, please.
Councilman DeLore.
Here.
Councilman Redson.
Here.
Councilman Jeffries.
Here.
Councilman Clemmons. Councilman Harris.
Here.
Councilwoman Salomon. Councilwoman Dreschler.
We do have four of the seven that is at form. It still takes four votes for approval or denial. And if anybody's on the petition tonight on our new business, request a deferral because it's not a full complement of members, just speak up when you're called on our new business and you'll be automatically deferred because of the lack of seven members being at the council meeting. Or if not, you're able to still go forward with your petition, but it still takes four votes for approval or denial by the legislative members who will enter tonight. Okay, we'll begin with the approval of the minutes that took place in the previous meeting, which was on April 4th, 2017. What is the council's pleasure?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion approved, we have a second. Any discussion of the motion, corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes? Hearing none. All favors certified by an eye.
Aye.
Gents? The ayes have it. Reading the agenda, additional items for tonight, we do have one. This would be a resolution to the city of Crown Point regarding Senate Bill 213. We would need a resolution number if this is added tonight for the council. Christie, would you have one available? We have a motion to add Resolution Number 2017-05-
14R.
14R. All favors certified by an eye.
Aye.
Gents? The ayes have it. And that will be listed as number seven on your new business. We'll have approval claims tonight, we'll have public comments, remonstrations, petitions, or public statements. We have a couple special recognitions by the mayor's office tonight, our employees of the month, and a check presentation by the local Cub Scouts PAC 45. We'll have reports to department heads, boards, or committees. There are no appointments. We do have one presentation tonight for Sawgrass Development here in the city of Crown Point. There is no public hearing, no defer business, no old business. Our new business tonight, we'll have seven items. Resolution 2017-05-11R, store it now. This is Crown Point LLC Petitioner and I and C Enterprises LLC. They requested a special use to operate a warehouse business within B3 Business District. Resolution 2017-05-12R, Monument Church Incorporated, Petitioner on Broadway Incorporated, owner requests a special use to operate a church in a B2 Business District. Resolution 2017-05-13R, this is a resolution by the city of Crown Point, county council authorizing acquisition of real estate. Number four, request for proposal, Crown Point Comprehensive Plan Land Use Subdivision Ordinances. Number five, ordinance 2017-05-12, and ordinance, amending ordinance 2016-1233. This is regarding to designated associations and subscriptions that can be paid for by city funds. Number six is approve a uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement. And number seven is the resolution that was just added. So that is our agenda for tonight. We'll go right into approval claims.
I approved, I visited the clerk treasurer's office and I reviewed the claims, including an in-depth audit of eight individual claims. I found these claims to be complete in documentation. And I also reviewed the Elon, which is the city's credit card bills. And there were two items on there that had minor issues pertaining to the new policies regarding the matter. Those have since been satisfactorily resolved, and I recommend approval of these claims.
We have a motion on the floor. That's Mr. Redson on the approval of the claims. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All favors certified by an eye.
Aye.
Gents? The ayes have it. Thank you. Chris. Next up is petition, remonstrations, and public statements. Always have to come forward and state your name and address for the record. You can address the council. Once. Very once, twice. We'll close the public portion of the public statements tonight and go into special recognition by the mayor's office. And we will begin with our employees of the month. And we have two that we want to recognize tonight. We have two individuals who have served the city of Crown Point for many, many years. One, both in the public safety divisions. One is a police officer and the other one is a firefighter. And we are going to recognize Chief Greg Delor, who will be retiring, or has retired, and we're going to bring back to the council for an award. Chief Delor joined the fire department in 1981 as a volunteer, became a full-time firefighter in 1994. He started with the department as a fire inspector before being promoted to chief, where he's had that hat and worn that hat several different times. He's made several different changes as the chief to make the fire department more progressive. There was a dive rescue team, a technical rescue team, multiple grant awards under his leadership, purchased firefighting equipment and training. When Chief Delor took over, we had three personnel on each shift and with the combination of our current volunteers. Through Greg's leadership, working with the administration of the city council, we grew that number to nine. And when he first took over, it was about 2,100 calls for service. And last year, they hit over 4,200 calls. So they doubled our number of calls in the city of Crown Point. Chief Delor, again, has been a firefighter for forty years. He looks forward to spending time with his wife, family, and his new granddaughter. And there's many things that he said he's going to put on the bucket list, fire bucket, right? And including traveling. The second recipient tonight is going to be Sergeant Sam Trapey, who we're retiring this week, May 4th, with thirty-seven years of service. Sam was hired in 1980 while he was an officer at the Indiana University Northwest Campus. Over the course of his career, he has served in a variety of different roles of our agency. Sam first worked in patrol division as a uniform officer. He was assigned to the investigation unit as a detective, where he worked there for a number of years. He rose up to the highest rank as assistant police chief under Mayor Metros. Sam has also been assigned to several different other capabilities within the department. Operations commander, was placed in charge of investigation units. He's worked as the desk sergeant in that position. He's helped with many, many different applications of officers. He was my field training officer when I was a police officer. He's been in many, many different roles. And if you had an opportunity at any time to interact with Sergeant Sam Trapey as an officer, you knew that you were in good hands and that the assignment was going to be taken seriously, and he was going to work hard to ensure some type of resolution to your case was going to be made to you. And so we want to recognize both of these individuals, not only because of what they've done in their roles, but their longevity that they've served in the city of Crown Point with over seventy-seven years combined experience in making Crown Point a safer place to live, work, and play. So we like to bring those two individuals up here tonight and recognize them as the employees of the month for May 2017. Chief, any final words here?
No, just been a pleasure serving the city for all these years. We've had a lot accomplished, the administration, council itself. And I look forward to continuing that.
Sergeant?
I just want to say the citizens and the business people have been very good to us as a police department, and we try to respond to their needs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the next group we want to recognize, we have the Cub Scout group, troop number forty-five is here. This is troop leader, Dan Nix, is going to come up and bring his troop up here. They want to do a check presentation. And we'll let Dan kind of explain how they were able to raise these funds and the donations that they're going to, the checks that they are going to present tonight and those proceeds, will be going to the police department and their donation fund. So, come on in there, guys.
Yeah, we're part of PAC 48, or 45 in Crown Point. The boys in our group, they made these bracelets. They sold them to different family members, people at their parents' work, stuff like that. Talking with the police chief, they said there was indeed that they do occasionally have equipment they have to buy for the officers that aren't covered by the city, so they can put for donations, stuff like that. So, talking with the boys, they said they want to do our community service project and raise money for that. So, like I said, we made these bracelets, sold them, and the boys sold a total of seventy-four dollars worth. Might not buy a ton of equipment, but it'll go towards something for the police chief and the police department. So, that's what we checked. They have here today. And they also bought a bracelet for the mayor, police chief. We have one for the clerk treasurer and then one for the chief staff.
Very nice. Thank you. Chief, go up here.
More of our boys were at bay tonight, but it's the middle of baseball season and a lot of community stuff going on tonight, too. There's more than these three that sold.
How much do you sell the bracelets for?
About three dollars. Some people get more, some people get less, but that would be enough.
We'll make sure that, behalf of the staff at your house now, we'll make a donation back to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, guys. Sorry, they stole your chip.
Okay, we'll go right into reports, department heads, boards, and committees. And council members, you were in your package, were given a document from Christie Dressel regarding accounts and interest made, deposits of our liquid cash. And Christie, you want to kind of go through this and explain to the council what you accomplished here?
Yes, thank you. When I came on board last year, we were making an investment at that time, it began in 2015, roughly around twenty-five thousand a year. We went back to the banks and then negotiated with them. They worked with us, they're all wonderful for the city. And we did get the interest up to 2.55 percent, which brought us to 54,893. And when that began, again, at the beginning of the year, knowing that the markets and everything and interest had come up, and we have one bank that's at 1.10. With that, we will be making an investment approximately 180,000 a year, just off this one bank. And it is looking, which is wonderful.
Good news. I'm going to share that good news with the council tonight. So, thank you. Any other reports, department heads, boards, or committees? Greg from chief staff?
No.
Just want to also recognize, as we close one chapter of Chief Delor, we want to recognize officially the capacity tonight. Chief Dave Crane will be the fire chief going forward here. And we will be doing a ceremony for Chief Crane at the Board of Works this Wednesday at two o'clock. We don't want to steal tonight's thunder from Chief Delor as he was leaving the building. So, we will recognize the new chief on Wednesday's Board of Works meeting. But let's give Chief a thank you. Okay, there's no appointments, presentations tonight. We'll go right to Todd Cleven, who is representing the developer for Sawgrass Development here in the city of Crown Point.
Thank you, mayor. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I promise I won't take more than five to six minutes of your title for presentation. The reason I'm here, and for the record to those that don't know me, my name is Todd Cleven. I'm the vice president of Diner Pete Group. And about sixty, seventy days ago, this property came across my office for sale. And I've always been intrigued with this area myself. It was heavily involved with the development of Feather Rock. And I've always liked that area of the city. This particular piece of property does reside at the southwest corner, just south of YMCA, and it's in size of twelve acres. Immediately to the south, there's a higher density single-family development. To the east, as I get in the presentation, is the senior living facility named Symphony. Also to the northeast, is St. Mathias Church. So, kind of getting an idea of where this is at. But- Do you want me to tell them about that? If you could, that'd be great. Thank you, sir. This, the vision that we have for this property, though, is the multi-family townhome development. And in my twenty years of doing this, I understand sometimes the multi-family townhome development can receive a little bit of a pushback. And the vision that we have for this property does require PU. Your PUD ordinance requires us to go to the plan commission, seek a favorable or non-favorable recommendation that comes to you as your body for the actual approval. Those are the only two meetings. And in order to present it to you for that approval or denial, we have to go full-blown with the engineering and PU documents, which would be possible. I spoke with a couple council members, spoke at plan commission level during our workshop, and I spoke with the mayor and just asked if I could be transparent with this project, present it to you, to feel your, to receive your feedback on it. We do not own the property. We can't walk away from it. But I think that you'll be impressed with the product that we want to put here. I asked, you know, if you'd be honest with me, I'll be honest with you. If it's something you'd like in your city, our city, I am a citizen of Crown Point. Our office resides at 1313 Wyeth Drive. And I personally reside at 250 East 103rd Place. Again, it's only a five-minute presentation. I'll walk you through it real quick and ask for your feedback. The project is going to be called Sawgrass. We are proposing seventy-six upscale modern townhomes. Just to kind of give you an example of typical density on a multi-family development. This is twelve acres. We easily could have come in with about 100, 110. We are promoting an open space that you'll see within this development. So, we are only proposing seventy-six units. It is a planned unit development. The units itself will start at 1,400 square feet, and should max out around 2,200 square feet. The average price is a quarter million dollars. The development itself will be completely maintenance-free. We're proposing a top lot as well as open space. We're going to go ahead and ensure and prolong exterior aesthetics. I'll get into that, how we propose to do that. We're also proposing pedestrian connectivity to the new expanded YMCA, the St. Mathias Church, the parish that is titty-cornered to us, and the Symphony Senior Living Facility. We are also proposing a school bus stop, we have a trolley stop. And these are all being owner-occupied, they'll be non-rentals. We can also touch on how we propose to protect that as well. My slides must be out of order here, but this is development, which I'll come back to. So, this is a vacant land, which you see. We're looking east, and directly at the top of the screen is the Symphony Senior Center. And to the top left is the St. Mathias Church. And the red lines indicate the property lines of the twelve acres. This is looking south in the same parcel. As you can see, on the far right side of the screen, it's the waterings. Cut off on the left side is St. Mathias Church. And again, Symphony at the upper left-hand screen. What we're currently working with and on is we're speaking with the parish as well as the Symphony to provide some sort of a pedestrian connectivity coming through the property, meandering with park benches, deposit fee mobile, even some sort of roundabout at the center, where people can walk from our community, they can walk from the Symphony, they can walk from the church. And we're even looking into how we can connect this to waterings as well. We just want to make it user-friendly for the pedestrian. This is looking north. Again, the red lines indicate the property lines. I just went through that. I apologize if my slides are off. And now, we're at the actual proposed development. On the far left-hand side of the screen is Marshall Street. As you can see, we're showing one entrance off of Marshall Street, and everything in green is the actual green space that we're looking to continue with. It's our intent, when we pull in, that you can see straight through the development. That's why we do not have any buildings here. And we'd like to have it where every building does not have a building behind them. And we are proposing a large top lot, a pavilion, and an executed bus stop that I talked about earlier. This is just zooming into the green space a little bit. And this is the actual product itself. We've put a lot of time into this. And as you can see, it's something that, I don't think this area has seen anything like this. This is an architectural facade and a vision that has been brought from out west. Diner Pete Homes has been based on the architectural in Colorado. And it's the superior and the ownership vision to put that architectural into all their products they do throughout Lake County. And it's been pretty successful for them thus far. This is just another clay model, as we call. This is what the back of the units would look like. One thing that we discussed in our team meeting last week that we overlooked until now was barbecue grills. How do we propose to handle barbecue grills? There's actually a product that we're looking, that will attach to the back of the building, and it'll fold down. When it folds up, it's completely stored away. It just folds down. And I think that that's something that we're going to pursue. In the front of the building, we have two units that are two-car garages and two units that are single-car garages. If I go back to a previous slide, during our workshop at the plan commission level, it was brought up, what would we do if the single-car garages did not absorb with the ratio that we think they would absorb? The plan can easily convert it to all two-car garages, and that's what this obligation here shows. I went ahead and created an isometric view of what the subdivision would look like. I know it's a high-density subdivision. We do have the garages in the front rather than the rear. The reason for that is if you typically put garages in the rear, now you're automatically inviting alleys to develop. We want to stay away from the alleys. We want to stay away from the asphalt. We'd rather put that towards the green space and open it up. So, we have room for any young children that may live within the community if they're able to play. This is another isometric view that we've worked on. I think when you see it like this, it's a little bit more welcoming. We are proposing high-end streetlights. We're proposing high-end street signs. These are our floor plans. You can kind of see the island with the circles. That's the kitchen area. The interior of these buildings are also, will also carry the modern theme of the cluttered school. We're working locally with D and L Wood Products right now on all the laminates and the exterior products that we're proposing. And what I have in front of you right now, the yellow, is just the meandering path that we're going to work on with the adjacent property owners and pedestrian connectivity. I did have a small video. It's just hot off the press, where you can actually fly through the development and have a better feel of how it works. See the large water feature at the main entrance? I could get into the technical side, but I don't think that I'm going to take your time with that. I will answer your questions, but as far as, you know, the size of the road right of ways and the connectivity and all that, that'll all be addressed at the plan commission level. But I can touch base on that if you'd like. Again, I mainly just wanted to bring the concept and the idea to you. I just wanted to bring the concept and the idea to you to feel you out, see if this is something that you'd welcome to that area. As you know, there is a higher density development vertically to the south. To the north, you're starting to see a heavy, not heavy, but you're starting to see a commercial component start to drive that area. The $35 million YMCA expansion is only going to enhance the commercial area there. There is a single-family development across the street. Our studies and our experience just will not allow this twelve acres to support ten, or 10,000 square foot single-family lots. And it's just something that we would take to a different area within the community. We would like to bring a townhome, upscale townhome project to our portfolio, and we feel this property is probably the best suited for that due to the surrounding amenities.
A little bit of comments or questions?
One of my biggest concerns, and I've lived in a few apartments in my days, biggest issue with alleyseas is, all it takes is one bad neighbor, and you're the whole community. And so, I guess one of the questions I would have is, if you have it, that looks like very high-quality art, as far as the architecture goes, but how is the soundproofing and insulation between the units? I mean, is this going to be a foot of concrete between the units type thing, or is this just thin walls?
That's a very good question. That's something that we've studied. What Mr. Redson's asking about is the party walls itself. There's got to be one, two, three party walls. And your code would allow us to stagger the studs and just meet the fire code with the appropriate drywall. We have been studying the sound in our commercial buildings that we have multi-tenants in. We do go over and beyond to secure that type of sound, isolate it to each unit, and that same type of construction will be passed on into the residential corner of this townhome project. We are looking at masonry. Depending on the cost versus- Depending on the cost versus fall in an airspace type of party wall, I don't know which one we're gonna use, but it'll definitely supersede the current code standards.
Well, me and Chad have looked at this before. Obviously, I'm a planning commissioner. We don't have a lot of views up here today. There's a lot of people missing. But I guess the one thing that, and I know we talked about, but I just want to let everybody else know, is the backyard situation. Are we gonna have that, you know, 'cause you don't have fencing back there or nothing to separate whose backyard is who. That was the one thing we talked about the planning commission that worries me a little bit.
One thing that we do not wanna see, and the portfolio and the reputation of the Dine and Pete group, it's a very young group. This is not gonna be our last development in this community, nor is it our first in the area. We're more focused on our reputation. We're more focused on doing this as a team. Your view as the improving body is just equally, if not more important than we are as a developer. And we want, we want people to pull in here and know that everybody came together and everybody worked on this transparently. Pet peeve of mine, and it's shared throughout the superiors of mine, are when you go to a multi-family development and you have those vinyl fences coming out of each unit. We're not gonna allow those, no fences whatsoever. And to furthermore control that, we're not even gonna have the rear yards be owned by the, by the ownership itself. Everything behind us, all the green space will be owned by the HOA. So a person in building A has the right to be in the backyard of a person in building C. It's all common area, all of the space back there. With the exception that there will be, you know, their entrances where they can exit through their rear patio doors, backyard doors. And we're also going as far as limiting the number of pets, type of pets, because we foresee that being a problem as well. You have it with single-family development, you're definitely gonna have it with multi-family development. And then the other thing is too, the pets will not be allowed to be unoccupied, unattended. If the pet is outside, the person must be outside with them. You just can't allow them to go outside. That might be a risk on our end, our sales, because how many people wanna go outside in hungry weather and have to go in the bathroom? But that's something that we're gonna go ahead and restrict to the community. We're also gonna have the HOA be a hundred percent in charge of everything from the house rack to the exterior. If, for some reason, a person in building one oh two backs in the garage door, the HOA will enforce that, that they have to replace it in a certain amount of time, and also that it will continue to match the aesthetics of the existing buildings. The biggest concern at our workshop planning commission level was rentals. How do we make sure that these will not be rented out? We have met with our attorney, who's preparing the PUD documents. And it was my initial thought, and he agrees with me, that we can put that in the PUD documents itself. Now, we do currently in our other developments put that into the covenants restrictions. But as you know, the covenants restrictions are not enforceable by the Mississippi. But the PUD is actually a law in place. It's a zoning. Now, another gentleman on the planning commission level said, "Well, who's gonna police it?" Putting myself in the city's shoes, I'm not necessarily thinking it needs to be policed. You know, one or two of these twenty years down the road happen to slip up and get rented out. Until it becomes an issue and more than half of the community is going that way, the city would at least have that tool in their pocket twenty years from now to throw that paperwork out and put a stop to it. We're not asking to police it. You know, we are gonna be heavily involved with it in the beginning. We anticipate a three-year build-out. We probably will be involved for three to five years until the HOA is up and running on its own, just like any other development that we do. But twenty years from now, you know, if microstabilization doesn't show and that there's a potential that developments do have a tendency to go down a different road. We can only be proactive and try to put those tools in place for the administration at that time that they can use it and strong arm it if need be.
I appreciate what you're possibly saying about that, yeah. And it seems to me that that would be inviting a problem. Even if the dogs aren't running, the food's, aren't they allowed to sit back in the garden? You know, I mean, you have neighborhood kids running, you know, within a few feet here by the neighborhood. Seems to me like, you know, something as innocent as some kids playing out in the yard there, if there's no boundaries, that you definitely got a real experience if you're trying to see that.
There'd be a lot more things to see as well. As far as keeping it all open space. We could definitely run the property lines in the backyard. What concerns me about that is then it's not being mowed consistently. This way, it's all the green stuff. It's all the green space, all common area. It's all being mowed at the same time. The aesthetics are definitely there. There will be an HOA board. You know, I can't tell you that you're not gonna get phone calls, but until it's understood that those kind of issues are, you know, those calls shouldn't come to the city. They should go to the HOA. As far as the parking, when we do design partner complexes, I believe we need two and a half cars per unit. The subdivision right now, we're gonna restrict all on-street parking, as we've limited the driveway and garages. As you can see, we also have some parking spots that we put on the, each street. We have about fifty additional parking spaces there for when people wanna have family gatherings or get togethers, but at least we have some off-street parking for them. But our parking might be incorrect.
I mean, I know it's preliminary, but any idea what the range for HOA with these?
I think they're about three hundred dollars a month.
Three hundred?
That'll handle the sprinkler system, the maintenance. And it's also, you know, just through our experience, we wanna get that kitty built up. So we're thinking that there'll be an additional fee at each closings. Might be minimal, a thousand dollars to go right to that kitty. So they will have something in the bank if they have an issue. You know, the streetlights, when you go anywhere over beyond a standard aluminum pole, the HOA or the homeowners are responsible for that difference. If the pole's two thousand dollars and our streetlights are four thousand, Yipso's gonna come out with a wood pole or stainless or aluminum pole unless you pay the difference again. So they do need some money reserves for that. They do occasionally get back into the mailboxes. I don't know if you can see in the video. This video was hot off the press today. I told you I needed it by May first and didn't receive it, but it's not a hundred percent, but I think if you look close, you can see each individual mailboxes. That's not gonna happen here. We will bring for storage, bicycles, wheelbarrows. Not that we will, but typical things you'd see in a garage. There would be room for that. And again, if our studies are incorrect and our first of all is a little foggy than we thought, we could easily convert it to all-two-car. I think the 3D rendering in the video kinda give you a better image than what we have at the planning commission level. Kinda brings our vision to life. I like it. I don't know if it's, kinda got a biased opinion towards it, but it's our idea.
What's the expected, do you have a demographic you expect to own there? Is this gonna be millennials? Is this gonna be retired people? Is it the downsides?
With the feedback I'm seeing on Facebook, I don't even wanna use the word millennial. Evidently, nobody knows what the definition of millennial is. I have millennial friends that are making two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. By definition, and I believe Wikipedia's definition of millennials, nineteen eighty and on, a lot of people are associating a millennial with something right out of college. But we we're a little nervous by not putting ranges in here, because there are two heavy markets out there right now. It is the millennial market and it is the empty nester market. We do have a piece of property in Crown Point that we're looking at to bring that ranch-style empty nester product. I don't think that these two can merge. This is definitely gonna attract a younger demographic, younger kids. That's the reason for the tot lot, especially with the YMCA being right there. Whether it gets to the expansion or not, I will see why it's allowed. I'm on their board and it's definitely moving forward. But what a great idea in order to connect, connect the two. If you could walk to church, walk to the YMCA, walk to see mom or dad with the adjacent senior center. I just think that this will bring it all together.
I think we have to address, and I've heard this from a lot of people, that we have to address what we've been doing here. We love our single-family homes around here, but as far as giving our seniors someplace to downsize to and giving, trying to get millennials into our community, we might have to rethink. I am somewhat open to something on this, but I suggest some of the issues that they brought up at the mission, the planning commission are just, you know, need to be addressed. I mean, do you want to, I mean, I love the idea of, I mean, they say millennials also generally don't like northern, I love northern area, but apparently the millennials say, "Oh yeah, I'd rather just have, you know, the HOA daycare." Well, it's great. You have a place the kids can run around. My other concern then is a lot of people and dogs. And are they taking their dog out there to relieve itself? Do you want your kids rolling around out there with the dogs? I mean, that's the beauty of having a backyard is that if you have a dog, you use it for a dog's place to go. And if you have kids, you use it as your kid's place to play. You kinda have control over that. And I just see the lots of conflicts going out there. People that wanna sit out there and picnic and the people that just wanna take their dog out there to relieve.
And those exact concerns come up there in our team talk meetings. And, you know, you cannot eliminate them. You can only try to be proactive and find out how you're gonna address them. You know, we might limit the play, just two-play area or have a little dog area if it gets to that point. We might see no pets allowed whatsoever, but I think we're really going to regret that, and we're still studying that. Maybe we just buy the first ownership for your dog park. Not a bad idea. There's more other ideas in our office about another new concept of Crown Point, I believe, we'll just propose in St. John's. And that would be more urban-driven, but again, I think that's where this community might be going. I think we're at the tipping point where we're gonna start seeing some of these major changes and these new trends taking off. It is a risk on our part, but the last thing we wanna do is come in and just use your traditional duplex subdivision, your traditional out-of-home subdivision. We wanna, we wanna take the risk and do something with it. If you think you can accept it, I mean, do you like the, do you like the looks of the product?
Can you tell us about the heated bus stop in there, the school bus?
Yeah, that's, you know, all of us, or myself, brought that up as far as, you know, when you're waking up in the morning and, you know, I'm a single dad myself, so it's even a little bit hard. And you're waking up, you're rushing the kids and you don't even wanna leave with the bus stop, but you're standing out there. The bus is fifteen minutes late. It's pouring down rain. I thought, let's put a bus stop in. We can kinda merge it, maybe possibly with the city and make a trolley stop. Whether it's gonna have three walls under or not, we haven't gotten into the details of it, but it'll definitely be heated. I'm a big fan of business world. You stop off with your bus stops and when I say heated, it's not gonna be H K C forced air. I mean, it's gotta be the toaster-type-looking heaters, but at least it takes a chill off of you and it makes you a little bit more comfortable while you're waiting.
What kind of airport when you're
Exactly.
Like everyone else would be doing.
And, you know, we do right now just have one main entrance off of Marshall. And we're working with the Symphony, I'm trying to work with the Symphony. I haven't really got to the person I need to get to there yet. So it's all in the planning stages, but we'd like to propose our second required connectivity, vehicular connectivity to their parking lot. Not for pass-through, but for emergency, because we do believe, and many engineers will tell you, that as far as safety and the speed of the subdivision, that one entrance on Marshall is better than two. If we're not successful with coming in and bringing it with the Symphony, we will turn that front into a four-shoot type. So we'll have two entrances on Marshall. But if you can envision that, you're gonna have one coming in, flying right out. By one end, and then roll around and come back. I think it'll slow the traffic down and make the flow a little better. But the plan itself, roll out for a four-shoot entrance and exit. And if that's what the city wants, we can do that as well. But again, the reason I'm here is I've been beat up before. If you don't wanna, tell me. We won't bring it to you.
But I think if you have a strong sales team that gives information out what the development is about and get those rules established early on, that'll help who's buying the property. Having the opponent of non-rentals or owner-occupied with the PUD is that protection, because it's gonna be in the title work. If there's loans being produced under, unless somebody's writing a check for cash or the bill, any loan document that goes out there is gonna be owner-occupied based on that. So if somebody's gonna try to flip this to be a rental, it's usually caught through the paperwork, through the mortgage process. So you have the protection there, which is good. Having these things with averages two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or higher protects our current property values in the city Crown Point. So it's not adversely affecting it in a negative way. It's only protecting the people's investment that's currently in Crown Point. And your HOA is gonna be the strength of the community. So if you know what you're going in, what you're buying, having a strong HOA, knowing the rules going in, have the protection of those things. I mean, you talk about, I know you guys' concerns about the free space out there with kids. If you're talking to the chief, you don't get a lot of calls from the apartment kind of places with the open green space, kids using those places out there because they're being infringed on private time. So you've already got some things in Crown Point that maybe provide the renters who are, maybe don't have the same feel of owner-occupied of their own investments. So they're a different style of person that wants to move in there and pay the whole year a strike for them that way. You know, if you just give them one month, it's, we all know it. You know, you go and work on it, you work on it crazy, and then something happens, you don't go back for three months. If you give them a whole year, hopefully they'll go right away. They'll go a couple times, a couple times if their membership's over, but hopefully renew. It's about a three-year legislative build-out. But if you're looking forward, you're moving forward with it. And with the feedback that I'm getting, I'm gonna go ahead and direct our engineers and our attorneys to full speed ahead and bring it back to the finished product.
So I like the private public aspect of it, that we're gonna have this bus station, a trolley stop, that we can that's something we're giving to the city as part of this.
I mean, you go down there, the trolley picks you up, takes you to downtown, go to local restaurants here. It's a Connecticut deli. The hospitals nearby, the schools are nearby. It's really a you know, again, the decision's gonna be, you guys as council, we definitely have the direction of the planning commission here, but I think it's important that we share the concerns or the loyalties to the people who come in front of this body. So they're having a direction by you guys. There's no surprises either way. I think it's being transparent by this body and transparent by the developers, a good model happy.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I don't wanna set a precedence and burden with, you know, every development company. Again, the way that the steps, way they fall, it was a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar gamble. I don't think we're gonna do that without at least meeting with you first.
The trolley and bus stop located somewhere that it could, isn't near the, they said it's adjacent to the YMCA there?
Well, the trolley and bus stop would be right at the roundabout. So we envision a trolley being able to come in, run the roundabout, pick them up, same thing with the bus. And the roads, the roads back, curb-back curb meet the current city standards. And we were able to do that. Our right-of-way is a little bit smaller. We did that, so we're able to get units on both sides of the road. I thought it was more important to take the parkway out rather than shrink the road itself. A lot of developers are going to that twenty-five-foot backer curb, backer curb for the right reasons. I don't know if I believe it. Probably because I still have young kids and I just don't like that dense feeling. So the road itself will be no different than a road in a single-family subdivision. Just the right-of-way. The sidewalks will be right against the curb.
Todd, you know how I feel. I like it a lot. I can get past, I don't like multi-family, you know that, but I can get past something like that because it isn't upscale like that. If you make that as legalized, if you make it as ironclad as possible in the POA as far as the rentals go, I understand both. The only thing I would really like to change, and we'd love to see two-car program, is we make it happen. One and a half is just, it just makes you crowded on the streets. If you can make two-car garages, you have two in the car. That, and that's, that's my biggest thing.
We were, you know, two weeks ago, we made a, the backyard fix, that can you get two-car garages out here? What we did is we took the entrances and turned them to the side. You know, we eliminated the front foyer. Those two units will have to enter from the side. I can't commit to it. I'll have, I can tell you this much, that option will be available. Whether or not we spec our first building with that, but we definitely, from the planning commission workshop till now, we do now have all two-car garages available with the market fairies. Appreciate the council's feedback on this and hopefully you've got some valuable information.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Pleasure.
Okay, again, we have no public hearing, no defer business, no old business, and we'll go right into new business. First, the agenda is Resolution two thousand seventeen oh five eleven R. To store it now, Crown Point LLC petitioner, INC Enterprises LLC, Ensign Rez LLC, owner requests special use to operate a warehouse business in a B-three business district. And we'll turn this over to Anthony to give the council his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mr. Katz came before the VZA to request a special use to operate a self-stored warehouse known as Store It Now in B-three Business District. Facility to be located at the northeast corner of one hundred thirteenth and Delaware, unlocks eighteen, nineteen, and twenty in Crown East Industrial Park. Mr. Katz gave a detailed summary of the project and review of the finding of facts. Disciple House Two, climate-controlled self-stored warehouses and five drive-up warehouses. Total of six hundred thirty-nine. Disciple House Two, climate-controlled self-stored warehouses and five drive-up warehouses, total of six hundred thirty-nine self-stored units. Office hours will be nine-thirty a.m. to six p.m. Monday through Friday, Saturday nine-thirty to three p.m. Customer access is available from six a.m. to nine p.m. seven days a week. All ingress and egress will be located on Delaware Street. Store It Now has two similar locations in Valparaiso and Munster. Each location has approximately ten customers per weekday and twenty customers per day on the weekend. This type of business is normally located in industrial area. After review of the quality of construction and maintenance of the currently owned facilities, along with the site's proximity to the industrial area founded in North alone Delaware, I did encourage the petitioner to seek a variance for this location. The VZA did agree with that assessment and made unanimous favorable recommendation to the city council. At the meeting, neighboring property owner did come before the board, as well as Mr. Edgar, Human Earth Landscaping, met me in my office. Both had concerns, but after reviewing the petition, they both left in favor.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the council here, and if there are any questions or comments we have on the petitioner. First of all, can you put your state name and address directly in place?
I can do that. My name is Jeffrey Katz, office at eight, D. L. Washington Street, Michigan.
Welcome here tonight. And do we have any questions by the council to the petitioner?
No questions, but I can say that I know some people get turned off by storage places and whatnot, but I can actually vouch for this place in my former profession. I actually wired here one in Munster. And this is like, now that we're on topic of upscale, this is an upscale place. This is very nice, nicely done. So, I'm in favor.
Any other comments?
I'd also like to say that the proposal for the sawgrass, I think is a great proposal for the community. I did note, however, that there's not much storage space in many of the foreplay. I think that is introducing to dealing with seventy-six new customers.
We have a motion approved, we have a second by Councilman Yorick. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, all favor than I. Kenz? The petition passes four zero. Thank you. You never know where your opportunity may arise, right? Next up, Resolution 2017-05-12R. Anthony, you want to give us a...
Sure, yes. Yeah, Mr. Klutske before the VZA representing Momentum Church to request a special use to operate a church in a B2 business district located at 2200 North Main Street or the old Chicago Title Building. Church has approximately two hundred members and is looking to relocate from Crown Point High School to this commercial building. They also have a similar location located at sixteen twenty-five South Pine Avenue in Cheryl. The church will have one mass on Sunday mornings at ten a.m. and Tuesday evening Bible study. Office hours are from nine a.m. until three p.m. Monday through Friday. VZA members were concerned with the parking and traffic issues. The church stated they would provide outside staff to assist the parishioners with parking. There were several remonstrators from the neighboring residential area that had issues with current maintenance of the parking lot and the surrounding landscaping. Also, the adjoining neighbor was concerned with parking, with the parking lot due to privacy issues and the overgrown nature of the shrubs and trees, and did ask for offense to between her lot and the parking lot. The church stated they would maintain the facility inside and out, as well as the shrubbery surrounding the parking lot. And the VZA made unanimous favorable recommendation, subject to conditions, that additional Sunday services are added if parking becomes an issue, and adequately maintains screening surrounding the parking lot, subject to discretion of the planning department. I did go out there and took a look at the parking lot. The bushes there were very overgrown and not kept up well. I believe with proper maintenance, that the homeowners and the church, everybody would be satisfied with proper maintenance of those bushes.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the council for any comments to the petitioner on Resolution 2017-05-12R. Any comments, questions?
I guess my question, I mean, I drove out there, kind of went through the parking lot too. Is it just one Sunday service as of right now, or is it, I mean, through the week, are you doing services?
I believe it's just one right now. Some of the members are here, Scott Thomas is here from the church, can I answer? More internal questions, if I can answer.
And so I see two hundred and fifty, is that what we had, two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred is initially, I sold two fifty, but two hundred is their approximate number of members.
They're currently operating out of the cafeteria at the foundation of the high school. Been there since two thousand.
Ninety-six, yeah, ninety-six spots.
Correct.
So they did say that if parking were to become an issue, they would offer more than one service on Sunday to try to break that up.
What's the building, what's capacity of the building?
The Chicago Title Building, real Chicago Title Building.
Correct. What's the, I mean, what does the building, what would be the capacity that's the most it could hold at any given point during a service? Is it three hundred fifty?
Three hundred.
Three hundred?
Yes. So by code, I mean, they need six parking spots for, I mean, for every six, in your principal assembly, you need one parking spot.
And I know we have some remonstrators at VZA for, I think you said for fencing and shrubbery.
Right, I mean, a lot of the neighboring residents, you know, this area, this building's been vacant for quite some time. So their concerns were like, it hasn't been maintained, the parking lot's in poor condition, the shrubbery's overgrown, and the church has agreed that, you know, once they get in there, that they plan on maintaining all that.
The shrub looks like it's cut back to me, or is that something that was recently done?
Last night's out there looked pretty, looked pretty rough.
I don't, I went up there, I saw the day, I thought it was trimmed back.
Blacktop's got to be resurfaced, you know, the bushes stuck. As I reminded, I had somebody go out there cleaning some time ago, but as I reminded, the remonstrators, the paperwork and stuff that was against the bushes, et cetera, were not the address of twenty-two-hundred North Main, they're the addresses of the, are for people that live there, you know, that got away from their gardens and all and blue. We cut it in our fence before, made it to see the else, et cetera. So, you know, still, it'll still be cleaned up, but once people are in there operating, they'll be watching with the culture. It's been vacant since one of them.
Is it, is it something that we're prepared, I mean, if we cut the bushes back, I mean, just as a homeowner, sometimes I cut bushes back and they don't really come back right, or, you know, you guys know how it works. I mean, is it something if, once we do it, they don't grow, they don't fill out? Are you willing to do some screening? Because really, we're supposed to have some sort of screening between commercial and residential.
Yeah, they would have to maintain that. If we determine that the screening is not adequate, they would have to address that.
The bushes on the north side, they've been there for a long time, they were catching all this paper and stuff now, but the neighbors are complaining about it, and we'll have to work with the staff there too.
I think what the council was asking for, it wants to be on public record that if there was an issue between the current shrubs that are there, it would go wrong, something would go wrong, that the church is willing to make sure that's maintained.
Yes, they're going to seal it, we'll re-sail the blacktop and we'll go with your recommendation on the bushes and stuff like that.
Any other comments?
I think it's important to maintain integrity of the neighborhood and to be good neighbors with your fellow homeowners. How many people are here representing the church? Well, that's awesome. Yeah, I think that says a lot. So...
Good group.
So I can support, I can support the resolution as long as we maintain the, as long as we adhere to the conventions we've made.
I think the members are willing to enjoy this long and boring council meeting. Good reassurances that if they need labor and put up some new bushes, I think they could find it.
This case was looking pretty rough.
We have a motion in the floor to approve Resolution 2017-05-12R. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, all favor than I.
Aye.
Kenz? Congratulations. Okay, next up is Resolution 2017-05-13R, Resolution for the City of Crown Point. Indiana County Council authorizing acquisition of real estate. Alex Kukunowski, attorney, will present.
Thank you, Mayor. We're here before the council tonight is a resolution, as you mentioned, for the acquisition of real estate. The, excuse me, the subject property is along Hundred Ninth Avenue. And as the council's well aware, and we've discussed on several occasions, that we have development and road improvement projects coming along. And they'll continue to come along Hundred Ninth Avenue. The reason we have the resolution for the council tonight is a little bit of an interesting situation that was caused for us by state legislation. So the redevelopment commission of the city authorized the legal department to move forward with a uniformed property acquisition offer for this particular parcel. Since that time, two years, almost two years ago, legislation has changed where the RBCs cannot proceed with in the domain on their own, needs to come back to the council for approval. Our two-year period on this particular property with this uniformed property acquisition offer will expire June sixteenth. And so if we don't take any action on it, if the council doesn't take any action on it, to proceed forward with an attempt to acquire that, this particular parcel, through eminent domain proceedings, it basically blocks us out for a three-year period. And so with that, as I say, blocking out, we won't be able to acquire the property, we won't be able to negotiate with that property owner for the acquisition of that property, which in turn, I believe would definitely stall us on our Hundred Ninth Avenue improvements. And so we're here before, I'm here before the council tonight, seeking this resolution to be put in place to allow us to proceed forward with further discussion with that particular property owner, and if need be, the filing of an action prior to our June sixteenth deadline. And so if you have any questions or concern with the council with regard to the situation, I would like to have a resolution for them tonight.
I think it's important now, if you let the council know, and we have before, just to reiterate, that the owner of the property is willing to sell. It's not like we're asking something, move out of a property that wasn't previously zoned and rezoned recently by the, by the same line two years back. It's just, it's a difference in opinion with the property's worth.
Correct. And typically, Mayor, I've done the real estate acquisition for the city now for a number of years. We have situations where the homeowner doesn't want the improvement to happen, or doesn't want to sell the property. And then we have the situations where, in this particular case, that yes, he wants to sell and he wants to move forward on it. Our state statute and our laws indicate that we as a city can only pay so much for a piece of property, the average of two appraisers. Property owners, and yet they may have some valid point that they believe that their property is worth more, or has the potential to be worth more as the development comes through. Unfortunately, we can't pay, and we're not allowed to pay for potential, or the case law shows as speculative value. And so that's kind of where the sticking point usually happens. However, in this situation, we do have a ready and willing seller. We think we would be a ready and willing buyer. Unfortunately, our numbers are not where they need to be on both sides. And so by allowing this resolution to move forward tonight, I believe that will give us a little bit of time to continue to discuss those numbers. Will allow us, if need be, to file the appropriate action. If that action's filed and we have court approval on a number, which may be higher than the initial number that we offered, we can proceed forward on that, complying with all state board accounts issues, because we have a court order indicating that this is the value, this is what you need to submit and pay for the property. And so this kind of gets the process moving forward. But you're a hundred percent right that we have a willing seller, we have an individual here that wants to sell his property, just a matter of getting to the appropriate numbers on both sides.
I'll open up to the council for questions of Alex.
I'm never a fan of eminent domain unless it's a rundown property that's diminishing our look, you know, we can name a few, greenhouse, movie theater, whatnot. I'm all for eminent domain, that aspect. The guy who does keep pretty nice property there, he is in good shape.
I think I can just address that, that point. I mean, typically, I mean, when we talk about condemnation, it's polite, it's run down, it was a reason for us to come here. What my experience has been, typically, it gets, we're seeing it used more with these road improvement projects. From the standpoint of that there's, there's really no other way to acquire that, that right-of-way, right? And so there's, even if, even if we diminish this down to the minimal we would need, because of the old setbacks, because of the way the properties are situated, it's difficult for us to acquire only portions that we need, right? We end up in people's living rooms, right? This road and sidewalk are coming right through your living room, which requires us then to take the action to acquire the entire parcel, even though our actual roadway or our right-of-way may not need the entire parcel. And so this particular property owner understands that, he understands that the road improvement to Hundred Ninth Avenue is coming. And there's no, there's no, there's no issue there. But it's, and I understand the concerns that people have with the eminent domain process, or you're taking our property, I think we have a little bit of a different situation here. Everybody understands that Hundred Ninth needs to be improved, including this, this property.
I guess the only thing I would be, I mean, not saying I don't trust you, I'm just, I can't take your word and pass this without, you got something written saying that he's willing?
Well, I can't because he's willing to sell. I mean, I do have paper, I do have a letter from his attorney indicating that, yes, we're willing to sell and here's our price. Our appraised price and what he wants for it, again, are two different things. And the only, the only way for us to continue those discussions is to proceed forward with this. And get the process started in court, so we can get a mediation set up, we can get court date set up, where it'll allow us to have a court order to enter indicating this is the price that you need to pay this particular property. Without that, and without going forward, like I said, the statute bars us from taking any further action for three years. And I think if that occurs and that's the way the council wants to proceed with that, it's really going to hamster any development that's going to happen, or any improvement that's going to happen on Hundred Ninth Avenue over that next three-year period.
Just bringing the council to speed here, the reason why we're in the clockhouse, because we did put an application for road improvements for Hundred Ninth. Got partially funded for the first part from Broadway, just into the ditch line. The second part was approved, but the funding for the dollars were taken out of diversity and put into bike trails throughout the county. We wanted to be in position to acquire that property, use the funding to pay for the acquisition of the, of the house in that process, using federal dollars, even twenty. Well, since it didn't get funded, that doesn't stop the time clock from the uniform offer that went out when Alex approached. The homeowner was willing to sell. This is the best scenario for both sides, because it's, it takes the homeowner and it takes the city out of the equation. If it does get to this point and allows the judge, who will then go out and get three independent appraisers, to really speculate what the value is. And it's either going to be residential, or it's going to be a vacant commercial lot. It can't be both. It can't be a homeowner, homeowner with a commercial property attached to it. And maybe it's going to take a judge to be able to decide where to go. This then opens the opportunity for us then to, if it's higher than what our appraisal say, it might be lower than what his appraisal says, but there's something in the middle there, gives us the ability through state board accounts to pay for something that's outside our local rules. And that's the only way it's going to be favorable to both sides. So if it's worth X and he's got it worth Y, we can't even negotiate in the middle if we wanted to. We have to go this process in order to do so. If we don't do this, that three years will hamper the entire process of Hundred Ninth. If you've been out there and seen Hundred Ninth, it, it has to be Y. That's part of the process of the interchange just being out there, it's part of economic development for the city going forward, it's part of the job creation of that corridor, it's part of the economic balance, the reason why the state of Indiana built that interchange for the state of Indiana for their own sales tax revenues. If it doesn't happen, we can't even put an application for any federal funding until the three years is up. And then you're talking about another three years beyond that before you see shovel on the ground, the way the federal process works. So you're talking about another six years, and I don't think the county is going to wait them for six years for that road wagon to take place.
And Mayor, if I may, maybe give the council a little bit comfort, I was involved with all twenty-two parcels that were with the original acquisition process for Hundred Ninth and nine sixty-five. And I'll tell you, out of the twenty-two parcels, I believe five or six went...
And I'll tell you, out of the twenty-two parcels, I believe five or six went into combination proceedings. We're able to resolve each and every one of those before trial. And so I, I don't see the actual initiation of the action as a negative. I see it as an opportunity for the parties to end up sitting down, for the parties to exchange information on valuation, and to allow that court order to be put in place, whether it typically agreed upon between the parties, signed up by the judge, that this is the appropriate value for that property. And so we did it on Hundred Ninth and nine sixty-five, we did another, almost twenty-some parcels on Maribor Road to Summit Street. So we're talking probably close to forty or fifty parcels that we've proceeded on with this type of action of this type of project. And all of those got resolved prior to any trial, prior to any judge having issued an order of trial. So our history, our, the process with this shows that this process helps it get resolved, helps the parties move closer together to getting a resolution, which I believe is beneficial for both sides, because both sides have to sign off on it, both sides need to go forward. So our history shows us that this, this does allow us to proceed forward and get the parties to a point where they can agree to a, to an acceptable number on both sides. And not so much acceptable on the city side, but acceptable from the standpoint of, we have a documentation in place from state board accounts comes in and says, why did you pay X amount of dollars for that piece of property?
Mr. Schuster, your thoughts, Bill?
It would be a mistake not to do it. Alex sent me the resolution, several weeks ago, I think now, to review, and, you know, to make sure everything was in order. And, I mean, everything he says actually right on, as the assistant city attorney, last administration, you know, we have to do the same thing. It's just, it's an action nobody likes to take. I mean, Alex doesn't want to have to do it. You hate taking it, but it makes it a little easier when they're willing to, when the difference is just the price. You know, when you can't agree on it, the bottom line is, we have no choice. This is the route you have to go, or you're going to wait six years essentially.
Right. Well, thank you for that.
I wish we could do it more with some rundown properties right now, that's, that's my main.
I don't want to be the attorney, I don't want to be the one that the attorney just competes property, I mean, that's not, that's not my deal.
I just want to just try to cross all the lines.
That's the example, and that's right on. I mean, it's something that, unfortunately, it's, it's a tool for us, or it's something that we need to, we need to proceed on.
As long as we can talk about maybe a service role there, to help with travel later, but, all right.
I'll leave that up to the empty there.
I move to approve resolution number two thousand seventeen oh five dash thirteen R.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
I'll say it.
We'll open it for discussion of the motion. Hearing none, all appear with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? Resolution passes. Thank you, counsel, thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a request for proposal, this is the Crown Point Comprehensive Plan Land Use Division ordinances. And I will turn this over to Greg Kowalski, who basically chaired this process.
Thank you, Mayor. The city created proposals to update the comprehensive plan land use subdivision ordinances. We received four back. The plan commission created a subcommittee consisting of council members, Councilman Jeffries, Plan Commission President, Alan Marshall, DCA member, Dan O'Nally, and the city planner, Anthony Schleger. They reviewed all proposals in detail, went over prior work of the people submitting, went over costs, went over an outlook of what they thought our product wanted to be. They took a recommendation to the Plan Commission, the last Plan Commission meeting. The Plan Commission agreed with the recommendation from the subcommittee, and that recommendation is here to be tonight. Chad, if you want to take the reins and the council on right now?
Well, I mean, everything Greg said is right. We, we met, we all reviewed the four different proposals that were submitted. You know, looking at what they had proposed, and the, and the way they were going to extrapolate a lot of the information from the general public. So getting their input, you know, one of them is working the festivals and the parades, and using downtown windows to put their plan together, so that everybody can come by and see, and have ways to give feedback on it. We just thought that was a really neat way to get the community involved, you know, and get good ideas from them. You know, as far as, as other entities, you know, the, the nurses and other players getting their input on it, you know, had worked with life-sized communities, communities in the area. And at the end of the day, I think, I think what Greg said is, I mean, we kind of have an idea of what we're looking for, and I think this one was best suited to meeting what it is that we're looking for out of the land we're using the building.
And it came in at the lowest price, you know, my life.
Came in, yeah.
So they're proposed, for the, the work to be done, that we looked, their proposal was seventy thousand eight hundred dollars. Came at the lowest of the four, best product that we've used from all the other cities and towns that we contacted, what they did for them. There was a couple of things that we could do as add-ons. So it was a recommendation of the board to go with TESCA and Associates, which would be assisted by Robinson Engineering and ACOM. Like I said, that number was seventy thousand eight hundred, the R recommendation for the council to improve, maybe in that to exceed eighty thousand dollars of additional meetings or needed or events function.
Greg, can you go ahead and put in public record four names of the companies at their associated price for each one?
Yes, Mayor. TESCA and Associates was seventy thousand eight hundred. HWC was ninety-nine thousand nine hundred. The Harsh Group was one eighteen nine forty-five. And Alzio was a hundred and seventy-four one.
We have the record who submitted, what the price points were, and all the documents, all reasonable and responsible as far as the bids that were put out. Again, I want to applaud the, the member committee that was put together by the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission themselves, particular time to do the work on this, and it wasn't an easy task. A lot of information together to gather, four good quality companies submitted, and everything being equal, we want to be able to get the best price, but also get the best product in terms of appreciability and stuff like that.
The principal of TESCA and Associates, Mr. Kyle Sivoye is here. Do you want to ask him any questions about what the process is going to be, your timeline? It's going to be about a, a nine to twelve month process, how they have to plan and pull the ordinance.
Is there any questions of the company that's here tonight?
I think that will sort of transpire as this thing kind of moves along some, you know? We kind of get into it, I think we'll probably want to take more questions on the chemistry here.
So I think we just, it's not asked before, it's a request for proposal, this is about the Plan Commission, I think we're just asking for the county council to vote tonight to support the decision of the backfiring mission by the ad hoc committee and the Plan Commission that was recommendation here tonight. Because at the end of the day, this is the body that will have to then appropriate the dollars that go along with it. So we're going to put out a motion of support of the recommendation that came from the Plan Commission.
Does that move?
You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all appear with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? You guys have it? Thank you. Uh, next up is an ordinance, two thousand seventeen oh five twelve, ordinance, amended ordinance, two thousand sixteen twelve thirty-three. This is for designated associates subscriptions that have been paid through city funds. This is where the Crown Point Fire Rescue determined that membership in the International Society of Fire Service Instructors was inadvertently omitted from the existing dues and subscriptions, whereas the membership to the involved state organization entails the payment of annual dues. Therefore, whereas the amendment to the ordinance, two thousand sixteen twelve thirty-three, adding said dues of subscription vendor is necessary to enable clerk treasuries to pay the invoices for said dues. So we're looking forward.
I'd love to read the title, and then hold over for a second, reading, mark, this one seventeen oh five twelve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion of the motion?
It is for our annual dues.
A hundred fifty dollars.
No further discussions, all in favor of Senate fight by an eye?
Aye.
Yes? You guys have it, with like the suspended rules, we get it off the books tonight? You have a second?
Second.
All appear with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? Rules are suspended?
To adopt, two seventeen oh five twelve.
We have a motion to the board to adopt, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all appear with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? Oh, that's right, RoPaul, thank you. Court of honor, RoPaul, please.
Councilman Abord?
Yes.
Councilman Ruffin?
Yes.
Councilman Jeffries?
Yes.
Councilman Carroll?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Move to reinstate rules.
You have a second?
Second.
All appear with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? Rules are reinstated. Thank you. Um, next up is approve a uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement from following. This is from Miranda O'Block, Clerk Treasurer's Office. It's a counsel's pleasure.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the uniform conflict of interest for Miranda O'Block.
You have a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all appear with an eye?
Aye.
Yes? Guys have it, thank you. Uh, next up is the add-on, this is the resolution, twenty seventeen oh five fourteen R. This is in relations to Senate Bill two thirteen. And Mr. Nichols, would you like to begin the, just the information to the council?
Right, I think prior to the opening of the evening's meeting, all of us, later on in the day, you did receive copies of the Enrolled Act, Senate Act two thirteen, and the advisory that did pass on the twenty-fourth, was signed by the legislative heads on the twenty-seventh, but hasn't been signed by the government yet, so it's not a law, but it's deemed to, in all probability, become the law of state Indiana, which created, in the eyes of most of the cities and towns in the state, that are members of the A organization and the former Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, were opposed to the passage of that legislation. What the legislation that is going to be enacted by the, the state upon signing by the governor is allowing the industry for what they call small tower cell units to be posted in any city right-of-way throughout the scope of the city, no matter what the, our right-of-way standards may be at the time, and no matter what the aesthetic standards are, and no matter how much it may intrude upon the property owner's uses of the individual property, or the, the use of the property by enjoying property owners, it creates all kinds of problems for our individual citizens. And, and so being informed that the passage had taken place, we developed a resolution through the writing of Assistant City Attorney Joe Ireck, in the help of Alex, Assistant City Attorney Alex Kudnowski, developed a resolution that we had distributed to the Board of Public Works and Safety. Got some signatures on, signatures on, and placed it in the clerk's office last week on Friday. Upon further review this morning and early afternoon, we came to a further discussion that it would probably be best if we could put this in front of this body this evening for an, or a resolution reinforcing that action that was taken on Friday. And the resolution was turned into a, a common council resolution rather than a Board of Works resolution. And it outlines basically exactly the same language that the Board of Works resolution outlined, and that was indicated and filed in the clerk's office last Friday. So what the city is asking the common council to do is to protect the rights of the citizens and the rights of the city, and our ability to control the placement of these towers. By the way, I did send this to the council attorney this afternoon, and he and I had a discussion after he had a chance to review it. And it's unusual, this doesn't happen often, but it's unusual that the state would put its own cities and towns in such a position that such actions had to be taken in such an immediate fashion. And though the governor hasn't signed it, take action to protect themselves by placing a date in the actual legislation itself that puts us, puts us in a bind, and acts us to, and, and puts us in a position where we have to take extraordinary action to protect ourselves. And by doing so, and talking to Pat this afternoon, we both, we've seen it before, we're still amazed when it does happen. And in this case, the resolution that I have before you, and Pat has, has looked over and, and the product of the city's legal department through Joe Ireck and Alex Kudnowski, and myself, with the cemented, not amended, but the common council resolution. We would ask that you approve, it does provide for those that do wish to come in to our city and do erect these small towers in the common right-of-ways. It does provide for a process for them to do so, but it asks them to, hey, how about tell us enough? And, you know, asking us to waive our, our rules and regs. If you're, you're on good enough ground, we'll, we'll give you the waiver. But I know that there are many people, many homeowners, in an oftentimes a city that has utilities placed in certain areas, and homeowners have their, their views that they love to look out of, and all of a sudden, there was a fifty-foot pole right in front of your, you know, your view, and you, you've got no right or anything to do about it. Well, I know that our Board of Public Works and Safety is aesthetically minded, and I know the county council is aesthetically minded, as an evidence by our support of the arts. So I would say that we, with granting the proper protections to the, the industry owners that would want to use our space, granting them the proper protections and their rights to come in and apply for the use of the city of right-of-ways, this resolution allows them to do that, frames out the proper procedure for them to do that, and frames out the procedure whereby those, those waivers could be granted. So I'm asking this evening for the common council to adopt resolution, resolution number twenty seventeen dash oh five fourteen R.
I have a question. It says all existing right-of-way located in the city of Crown Point are hereby declared area strictly for underground or buried utilities. As much as I would love all the utilities, and Crown Point would be so much prettier if we could bury all those power lines, but that almost sounds like that we're not allowing, there's nothing here about the existing utilities.
The, the ones that are existing, they're existing. We cannot go back and do that.
I'll just say the language just almost sounds like that, it says they are declared.
Yeah, I can't say the language isn't perfect. I guarantee you that. But at this point in time, I would say that we are better off with this than without it, and our citizens are better off with it than without it.
I agree. Mr. Nichols, you know, at least this kind of puts us in the driver's seat a little bit, where we can tell them where you can put it. Yes, you can put it in our city, but we're going to tell you where. The only thing I did learn from this, from normal state legislators that I did talk to, is that most of them will be put like on top
-uh, is that most of them will be put like on top of stoplights, or something like that, which I'm okay with that.
We were hoping that.
But I don't want some big fifty-foot tower and some big subdivision, now that's a problem that they're having on the wind field before seasons, there's no stoplights.
Right.
So they were gonna try to get it to go underground, but how they're finding that.
Earlier this year, there was a small cell tower proposal placed before Court, Court Street. Right, right in front of the crossroads-
Right by Crosspoint, between there and-
Yeah, Crosspoint, yeah.
Yep.
And I, and that's right behind my, my office building.
Right.
So I, I took the map, and I walked in my back window, and I looked on, I said, we're not gonna have much of a driveway to get in and out of their parking lot, because it was right there.
That's right.
I mean, there was no further consideration beyond it, too, with that, where they wanted to put it.
I, I understand it's coming here, that's fine, you know, it's gonna better us, you know, but at least let us have a safer, I agree.
Well, the other, the other disappointing part of this, uh, is, again, we're not against technology advancement and stuff like that, that, you know, I, I've heard a lot of clear from this council that you don't like to have things last minute put in front of you for consideration. This, this, the state didn't do that for us last week, passed an issue, there's other municipalities that are doing emergency meetings, we were fortunate that we had a meeting today, uh, on the books, that we could add this, other municipalities that are doing emergency meetings over the weekend, because Derek don't have her council meeting on Monday day, but on Wednesday or some later dates, and they had to get it before midnight tonight, uh, May first, and with very little consideration, this was a last-minute bill, it was stuck through, put through, approved under twenty-four, adopted, and signed under twenty-seven, gave us no time to react to this. And so, again, this might not be the most perfect one, but this is the best position that keeps us in first position. We know that the next chess play will be the state coming back and, and looking at the local ordinances, uh, or resolutions, and seeing how they can supersede that, but not before that the state of Indiana and the local towns and the Indian cities have a voice with this as well, to work in concert with the local, uh, that's the disappointing part of this, so this is why it's a knee, knee-jerk reaction, that's why it's a, given to it at the last minute, it was given to the fastest way we could, based on the information given us. So I just wanna make sure it's quite clear to the council.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2017-05-14R.
There's a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, sent a fight by an eye?
Aye.
Against? You guys have it, thank you, council.
One, one quick thing, though, what does our IT guy think about that, though? Everybody gets excited, I don't think. It's all about you, that was all.
Yeah, yeah, we just put stoplights, you know, subject to-
And again, uh, this does not stop the city Crown Point, we wanna do tech, technology to Crown Point, we just wanna make sure it's being done in a seamless situation, that we can have it, and not ensure that people's property values are, are methodisms. Okay, uh, Miss Lanis reports in Matters, well, sort of, Diana, I know there's several things going on in the month of May.
Thank you, yes, it's beginning to be busy around some point, May third, um, Wednesday is midweek with Mayor, we ran at eleven-thirty AM at the new South Shore Arts Building, uh, at six-eleven North Indiana. May fourth is the National Day of Prayer, it'll be at noon on the east side steps of the square, and May sixth is opening day for the Cal Ripley Little League and Girl Salt Farm at nine AM around the square. May eleventh is, uh, the first day for our car crew season, um, it'll be around the square and on South Main Street from five to eight PM. And May twenty-ninth is the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony Parade, beginning at ten-thirty AM, and the ceremony at eleven AM at Big Wood Cemetery.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, any other business that needs to come in front of the council tonight? Just before we adjourn, just to make sure, uh, you know, uh, one of our councilors should be here tonight, uh, do, uh, health situation, uh, Councilman Clemens, just keep him in the box, prepares for speedy and full recovery, he should be, uh, back and ready for his debut for Hollywood very soon, uh, but he was supposed to pass on, he's doing very well, and, uh, hopefully be back, uh, in some capacity, uh, this week, uh, Board of Works and, and future members of his, his district and any other elders who may need to, his guidance, so he's gonna keep his speedy recovery and thoughts in place for the, for the, uh, if there's no other business for tonight's council, uh, motion to adjourn, do we have a second? All in favor with an eye?
Aye.
Against? You guys have it, thank you, council.